Welcome, everybody. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting on Wednesday, September 27th. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We are joined today. I sound like I'm doing a marital ceremony, right? I'm officiating. I've done that, haven't I?
Yeah. Well, my phone's on.
On your phone. Um, we are joined today by Danielle from Panda. The station members, cheers. Thank you, Danielle, for being here. For the folks at home, Danielle, if you'd be kind enough to pan over to the screen for a view of tonight's agenda items. We have two public hearings, which will be just continuing until October 10th, because we have to provide more notification, days of notice. So we'll be opening and continuing those public hearings. We have a presentation on the 2024 tentative budget and a discussion on some CDBG possibilities. The grant application is due next month, but we need to bounce around some ideas with the county who administers the program, actually later this week. Some more discussion about water rates and charges for the Water District. We won't be taking any action on that. And then a brief discussion on Agricultural District 21 properties. All the properties, every eight years, go through a review of whether or not they should be included in the area district, which also is administered on the county level, state to the county. This is actually going to become Ag District 21 instead of 20, and it's a larger geographical area. And then we have our committee, department, and board reports. Okay, a couple of announcements. Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, we are having a rabies vaccination clinic. If you recall, we had the clinic, Springtime, Springtime?
Yeah.
Here at Town Hall. It's now at Hyde Park. It's $10 for non-residents, but it's free for everyone else. Cats, dogs, and ferrets of Dutchess County residents. And if you think that there aren't a lot of ferrets, you may be correct, but we did see a few when we hosted it and some other animals. The Lodge has a chicken barbecue coming up. The Elks Lodge, that is, Saturday, October 7th, $16. We don't have a flyer, by the way, but I would be remiss if I didn't remind folks at home.
It's not the Elks Lodge. On Gray Street, it's the Masons.
Sorry, it's the Masons. I have, I will bow to them for forgiveness, yes. It's the Masons on Gray Street. Thank you, Christine. It is the 7th, 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock, early dinner. So moving right along, the other event that I wanted to remind folks of is one of my personal favorites, not that that matters. It's Tivoli Street Painting Festival. It's this Saturday, September 30th. You can show up, I believe, at 9:30. They start accepting requests for squares that were not already pre-registered. You will see me and many other volunteers. It's a wonderful community event and lots of talented artists there as well. The other announcement I have for you is I've just been in touch with Congressman Ryan's office. He plans to have mobile office hours here at the Red Hook Town Hall Tuesday, October 17th, from 10 o'clock in the morning to 12 noon. So it's October 17th, 10:00 AM, noon. If you would like to see representatives from his office, please do come here and see if there's any way they can either assist you or importantly, take your input on matters that are important to you. Okay. Why don't we, I think we've met our 7:35 timeframe. Why don't we go ahead and Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the notice?
Do you have public comment here?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna fit that in between 7:35 and 7:55, Linda, if that's okay?
Well.
You wanna do it now?
I wanna do it now because my car light is blinking and I don't know what's wrong with it.
Linda, come on up for public comment, since we know it's the one and only.
Okay. I have three issues, the one being St. Margaret's Committee, which is still not established. I sent an information on the website to you all that it was incorrectly listed, the members of the committee, which hasn't met since 2015.
Yeah.
When the chairman died, it seemed like that was the end of the committee. However, the town's been working for eight years on that building, and I understand you're working inside the building. And it's, it's difficult because you have one person working on it. You're not working with an historic architectural person, and you're making changes to the building, as well as you wanna put in an elevator, which you say you're gonna put it in, but when I foiled, there was no specifications for what you're doing. So you're running by the seat of your pants, and we need to re-establish the committee. Okay. Number two, I have been working with Congressman Ryan's office about the post office. There has never been a handicapped parking spot. So we consulted with the postmaster, and what we're working on is trying to get a handicapped spot in the front of the building. DOT is now involved in this. The other thing that I would like to happen is for the town to give its blessing to having another crosswalk put in where the post office is. Right now, we have five crosswalks on the south of Route 9, but there's nothing on the north side, and we need one at the post office. The third issue is on the committee reports. We don't have all the committees giving the reports monthly. The Tree Commission is there every month, giving their report, but the other ones are not. And I think we need to get them to give you the reports so that they show that they're responsible for what they're doing, and the public knows. And getting back to St. Margaret's, all the work that's been done inside, outside, the public is not aware of what's going on. We need to get a committee established.
Thank you, Linda. Okay. Forget anybody else with public comments? Okay, hearing none. Let's move right into our first public hearing at 7:35. Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to read the notice?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 27th, 2023, at 7:35 local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law, number F, proposed of 2023, entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 131 of the Town Code Entitled Vehicles and Traffic to Provide for Regulation of Stop Intersections and Crosswalks and Exclusion of Certain Commercial Vehicles from Specified Local Highways. To Limit the Operation of Heavier Trucks and Similar Vehicles on Certain Highways in the Town, Which Will Benefit the Health, Safety, and Welfare of the Public While Still Providing Suitable Connection With All State Routes Entering or Leaving the Town." The Town Board has determined that the proposed law is classified as an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Written comments may be sent by email in advance of the hearing to townclerk@redhookny.gov by 4:00 PM the day of the hearing. Please note Local Law #F, Proposed of 2023, in the subject. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated August 8th, 2023. Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak on this? Just as a reminder for the folks at home, it's a modification, an amendment to the local law we passed earlier this year, which directed heavy trucks on our local roads to appropriate roadways, unless, and of course, if they were providing deliveries or doing work on any particular local town roads. We have been noticing and been hearing from constituents about trucks bypassing appropriate roadways and increasing impacts with inappropriately sized trucks on our very local rural roads. Would anybody like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none. At this time, we do need to continue this public hearing to October 10th. I'd suggest we do it to 7:35. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so I move that we continue the public hearing on proposed local law, number F, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. All right, well, this is gonna be a little tricky because our next one was actually scheduled for 7:55, and then we have a very long budget presentation. So let's jump around a little bit, shall we?
I thought you were gonna filibuster between us.
Yeah, I'm really filibuster.
I don't know why.
I'm not quite sure that's necessary.
You wanna do CDBG?
So, uh, no, I think that might be a little longer discussion. May we jump all the way to Ag District Properties? So there is a 30-day public comment period. Every eight years, there's a cycle at which Ag District properties in each municipality, each Ag District undergoes a review by the County Farmland Board and the Legislature. And so what they are proposing, they are, it's a continuation of Ag Districts 2021, 22, and 23. They're required to review it prior to March 12th of next year. They have a public hearing scheduled for October 10th, the night of our next meeting, at 7:00 PM at the legislative chambers. The proposed new Ag District would encompass the lands of Armenia, Beekman, Clinton, Dover, East Fishville, Fishville, Hyde Park, La Grange, Mylan Northeast, Falling pine plains, Pleasant Valley, Poughkeepsie, Red Hook, Rhinebeck, Stanford, Unionvale, Wappinger, and Washington, as well as portions of the villages of Milbrook, Milton, Falling, Red Hook, Rhinebeck, and Tivoli. The entire Ag District is, as proposed, approximately 194,000 acres. And if you'd like to see them, it's available on duchessny.gov/AgDistricts. There's a notice. Folks, did you have a chance to take a look at the list? Obviously, it is just a list, but it details which ones are recommended to be included, which ones are recommended to be removed, either because they're no longer farmed, mostly because they've been converted to some other use, residential or otherwise. You could see there was a field that was tradition, and so there were all these properties here, because now there's plenty of little lots have been removed from the Ag District within our municipality. And here's recommendations on which ones to retain. Any of these addresses probably look very familiar to you. Board members, did you have any questions about this?
I didn't see anything in the material on why they wanna combine four districts into one gigantic district.
There was no explanation.
Okay.
That's a very good question. Shall we shoot them a note?
Why not? I mean, because it's pretty much, they're just, all of the county is one Ag District, so maybe that's what they're trying to do.
It could, it could be.
But it would be nice to know what the thinking behind it is.
You know, I counted, interesting that you mentioned that, I counted they, because that's the kind of strange things I do sometimes. I counted the municipalities. I only counted 20 townships and not 22. So there were a couple that were left out. Was the Town of Poughkeepsie in there? You have your resolution.
The Town of Poughkeepsie, well, it doesn't have a city, and it doesn't say city, a beacon, so that would be 21.
Uh, no, there are 22 townships in the county. So there are a couple that are missing, is my point. But anyway, I think we should inquire why it's, why it's being combined. It also doesn't really tell you town by town, whether or not you're gaining or losing. Here is the map, by the way. I think this is really a tribute to a lot of the work that this board, other boards, the community has done in keeping lands in farming and available for farming. And just look at, you know, how much of the township still remains in this proposed Ag District. And obviously, kudos to the farmers. They're the ones who have been keeping it open for generations. Any, any more thoughts on that? All right, so my notes are to inquire on behalf of the board why it's being combined. And I think we should send this out with our news alert system in case there are properties that are involved.
I guess, is there, any other question would be why are some towns left out?
Yeah.
If it's a county basis.
Right. And if you were in the Ag District, you received a separate mailing from them, notifying you that it was another eight-year review cycle and asking you whether you wished to remain, and if you did, you took no action. If you did not, you then needed to send in notice. Okay, so why some towns? Not included? Anything else? All good. Okay, those are my instructions. We are, am I quite there? Nope. Go too fast. All right, so interestingly, we can do this a little bit backwards. So we do have a resolution approving the water rates and charges for Water District 1. That's the subject of the next public hearing. We do have to extend it for time purposes to October 10th. We have, I believe, did we prepare a notice with a proposed 5% increase? There was consensus at the last meeting that we were not comfortable with the 10% increase, given the reserves that they had in order to address any repairs. It was more than sufficient amounts for that. Not necessarily to do a 10% increase, but that we would entertain and wanna hear feedback on a 5% increase. And so I think that was included on our notice. And here's the schedule. So we should update, and I, I imagine we'll now be retroactive at least for 10 days, going to October 1st if we were to approve a previously scheduled 5% increase as part of a multi-year plan by the Water District. Okay, let's go ahead, and it is just about 7:55. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the next public hearing notice?
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 27th, 2023, at 7:55 PM local time to hear all interested persons on proposed modification of the water rates and charges for Water District #1. The Red Hook Water Board has recommended modification of the charges, of the water rates and charges, to increase the minimum rate from $49.48 to $52 for up to 9,000 gallons, and from $6.02 to $6.30 per 1,000 gallons over 9,000, as further set forth in the schedule on file with the town clerk. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 20th, 2023. Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. Seeing as it is now 7:55, would anybody, we're gonna open the public hearing. I said move, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Hearing none. I propose we continue this public hearing with a proposed previously scheduled 5% increase in the quarterly rate to October 10th at 7:45. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very much so.
Mr. Supervisor, did you take a formal vote on extending the hearing for the DNT as well?
We did.
Did you do 7:35?
We did.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure I put time correct on that.
You can even do a warn a wolf on me and go to the video too. All right, let's talk about taxes. Everybody's favorite subject, the 2024 tentative budget, Town of Red Hook. We have said over the years that if we don't have to raise taxes, we won't, if we have to, we will raise taxes. I'm happy to report in the budget that's being proposed for your consideration, Town Board members, this will be the eighth year in a row without a tax increase in the 2024 budget. This slide here, I think, sort of outlines the basic elements of the budget. The tax rate declines by 13% to offset the increase in residential assessments. As you know, we've trended properties, I guess, that's our bad rather, at the direction of the state, 13%. This followed 17% in the previous year. If you've owned property in the Town of Red Hook over the last decade, probably, that property has been trended up 30% over the course of time, and your assessment reflects that. We have lowered the tax rate, however, larger, more than 30%. So a consecutive year of flat or lower taxes, fund balances and credit rating remain strong, a near-perfect risk score, as articulated by the Comptroller's Office. Some of the highlights again are bond ratings, established and reaffirmed projects that are continuing. Obviously, you've read about the Cooking Ham projects, the West Side Trails, parkland improvements and expansion, or just some of the projects. We don't go it alone. One of the most important aspects to running local government is recognizing that we need our partners, and we need to have vibrant relationships with other levels of government. And we need to be very busy applying for funds and grants, and Town of Red Hook has been very successful in doing so. These are just some of the grant amounts that we've received over the last several years for various projects. Reorganization for efficiency, taking a look at our departments, and so on and so forth. Refinancing of debt. You know, when we talked about going ahead and refinancing our debt years ago, earlier than it was due, we discussed how we needed to take advantage, even though there was a short-term cost associated with an early repurchase, refunding, rather, of the serial bonds, that we needed to take advantage of those very low rates. I mean, they're to something right now. And so history has proven us to be either lucky or very smart because those interest rates would be, you know, probably double right now on the debt associated with many of the projects that were here prior to our taking office. Lower utility costs. We've talked about how our clean energy projects are really great for the environment, reducing emissions, but we really want folks to know at home, if you don't already know, that many of these projects are saving a lot of tax dollars, whether it's the community solar project, solar on Town Hall, highway. It was over a decade ago that we applied for grant money for solar, for the fire company, and the firehouse is completely energized by solar power right now. It meets more than 100% of their needs. And these actions are really proving themselves to save a lot of tax dollars. LED streetlights, you'll start to see this year a little bit, but certainly in the next couple of years, if you're in a lighting district, your fees are gonna start to decline because we will have already paid for the conversion in just a few short years. And then you'll just be paying for very greatly reduced energy bills. So what else do we have? I think I referenced earlier, this is, the Comptroller's Office has a formula or a methodology. I don't necessarily subscribe to all of it myself, but they have a mechanism where they establish the fiscal health, or more importantly, the risk to a community. As we've said over the years, we have a near-perfect score, and I wanna show you why we don't have a perfect score, however. You'll see on the first page some of the metrics that you need to achieve. We far exceed many of them. Where we had our one little blip, and I think these pages are on backwards, actually. This is page one. Our one little blip was back in, where are you?
Is it a page?
Is it there? Are we missing a page?
It's this one.
It's this page here? There it is. Thank you, Jacob. It is on the second page. So in 2020, we all know, when the pandemic started, our revenues cratered, and we made some adjustments in staffing and elsewhere in order to respond to that dramatic decline in revenues. And our expenditures exceeded our revenues only by a tiny amount, less than 1%. But that's the little ding that we have. Otherwise, we'd have a perfect risk score. And you can see over the three years, the other two years, our revenues exceeded by 6%, and then in 2022, by 3%. But it also add, in the middle of the pandemic, we were doing a complete overhaul of the Red Park at the same time, and so there were additional costs associated with that. We're fortunate that we've been investing in our community over the years, even while keeping taxes lower. Some of the projects you see illustrated here, the sidewalks on Route 9, critical. Some of the projects you see illustrated here, the sidewalks on Route Nine, critical. There is a sidewalk connection now being built on Old Farm Road that will connect the new Tradition Development to Route Nine. Town Hall parking lot was redone, actually, a septic system had to be redone on an emergency basis. Thankfully, that project went well. LEDs. We purchased land to expand the park. We've talked about Red Park West and building out. You see some of the images there. More retrofit of Town Hall. This building is so much more energy efficient than it was years ago. We have closed cell insulation, air source heat pumps, the new generator arrived and is installed. That's working nicely. ADA, our building has changed dramatically as far as accessibility throughout the building. We've renovated our bathrooms and our entrances to accommodate those with physical challenges. Highway garage, there again, solar, LED lighting, lots of investment in equipment. And obviously, employees, we can't do this alone. Employees are invaluable. We've had to increase wages on our employees over the last couple of years especially. One of the great investments we've made is in programming in the community and the community center. Folks may not realize it, but the Town of Red Hook provides funding for programming, recreational programming and otherwise. At the community center, we applied for a grant and had some matching funding for a generator to create some resiliency for that building, which is now our warming and cooling center. We've expanded services at our recycling center. First of all, we're making it free access for residents. You won't have to pay to use a public facility. We have exciting programs, like food, waste, compost and recycling for refrigerants for folks at home. If you ran your air conditioner this summer, or if you've got an old fridge and you want to get rid of it, you know, we accept those at our recycling center because we have dedicated and qualified volunteers who remove the harmful refrigerants from those appliances before they go on to their next stop. Expanded programming, Red Hook Public Library, St. Margaret's Summer Programs. There are a lot of programs on the outside of the building. We are doing repairs. I think you heard Linda reference St. Margaret's, repairing walls and right now, Shippo is reviewing, you know, minor changes to bathroom faucets and so on and so forth before those renovations are completed. It's for ADA accessibility, but we're repairing all those beautiful old giant plaster walls in there so that it is safe for people to occupy the inside. It's been a gift to have the library use the facility, however, in the summertime. Expanding free summer rec programs. They now go longer in the day and it's been a real help for families in this community. We actually had someone indicate that they moved to Red Hook just because we had a free summer program that their kids could participate in. New playgrounds for preschool and school age, that was what a huge community event. This is one of my favorite photos right here. It rained almost every day for those ten days of installation. You could not have asked for worse weather. You could not have asked for a better community building event. Facilities continue, state-of-the-art. There's a good drone shot. Field, multipurpose field, originally scheduled for Red Park West and then with community input, we revised the plan to have the field over on Red Park East. And it's been enormously successful. Our recreation parks are getting tremendous utility and I think they look forward, many of those leagues and individuals look forward to us finishing the build-out on the west side. We have batting cage, professional lighting, all of the things that have really enhanced the experience at Red Park.
We'd also add that so successful that many other communities outside Red Hook have been asking to be able to use our facilities.
Yeah, that's in the record, the work community.
Yeah.
And then, you know, yeah, there are policies for that and they're mostly going to turn down.
Yeah. Well, and many of the communities are building similar facilities. I think Red Park put in, Red Park, or Rhinebeck put in their artificial turf field as well and it's getting good use there. We had a disastrous sort of construction previously on the basketball court and that's been completely redone, the drainage, and it's just a wonderful new LED lights. The same thing is true of the tennis courts, LEDs and fencing. And then, this is my new slide. Was there life before pickleball? Apparently, there was, but with some in our community, not necessarily. I was talking to one of my neighbors who really thanked me because the community that she has developed playing pickleball, it's really brought a lot of folks together. And so, what a great adaptive reuse of that roller rink that was getting almost no use whatsoever. So, the good news is that they love their pickleball. The bad news is they want some sort of an overhead gazebo type thing to, you know, protect them while they're waiting for the next game and they're round robin. Recreation facilities, again, Linda's left. I know she's an important champion for accessibility. We have revamped that park in so many ways to make it more accessible, restrooms, walkways, the snack bar. Now you can roll up to the snack bar and kitchen and you see even the dogs can drink down the bowl. Seasonally. Seasonally, you can roll up.
And it's not open all year round.
It's not. Thank you, thank you very much. No, we do close during the snow season, yes. Thank you. Part new parking lot, more ADA parking. LEDs, rebuilt the dugouts with new roofs. That's on both east and west. There are now, we've got a new maintenance garage, refurbished features, new pathways. And unnecessary evil. We do have a camera security system at the park because we do on occasion have vandalism or folks who think it's quite comical to face the property, unfortunately. Red Park West, I mentioned it earlier, here are some of the build-outs, a new softball field, new dugouts, trailhead, parking benches and kiosks. And of course, the wonderful Sawkill Trails, if you have not walked them, I think you'd be pleased to see that new addition. Actually, starting this week, momentarily, maybe not even started today, Red Park Connection. So, that work is undergoing. And I think for the next five weeks or so, they'll be doing the work in the crosswalk. We've heard about crosswalks tonight over to Lyndon. And then, of course, I mentioned earlier, very exciting project, the Cooking Ham Parklands and Trails connecting Abrams Park to Town Rec Park. And here's a map developed by Duchess Lane Conservancy. Appreciate their help in that. I'm going to use my cursor. You see, this is Abrams Park. You'll be walking straight instead of turning around and going back now. Once we improve the trails, and they'll be ready in 2024, you'll be going, continuing on. These are existing farm roads. This is Wilber Lane, be closed to traffic, to all traffic except necessarily, there's one house right here and then a farm, farmstead over there and our water district there. But otherwise, limited only to pedestrians and to non-motorized bikes. And the trail system exists here. You see the dotted lines. We'll even go over to Mill Road as well. Wonderful views when you're at this part of the farm, looking west, you see the Catskill Mountains. And importantly, we talk about the connection from one park to another. You'll be walking through this finger here, if you will. We'll be applying for a grant and seeking DEC approval to have a bridge that will traverse over the Sawkill and connect right into, this is Red Park here. If I pull it up, you'll start to recognize, actually, this aerial shows the park under construction.
If I could just add a pedestrian bridge, yes?
Pedestrian bridge, yes. You didn't want to have another type of bridge? Yeah, pedestrian only, again, non-motorized for biking, bicycles. So, connecting the two parks. So, this is Cooking Ham West for folks. And so, one of the projects, obviously, was the farmland preservation on the east side. You see that we have through incentive zoning funds, we have reserved out these 12 acres here potentially for workforce affordable housing. And we hope to hear something in the near future with regard to grant funding associated with that potential project. Dog park, so let's talk about dog park for the folks at home. We started to do a little work to try and replace some of the deteriorating elements. Fencing, we're looking at some temporary fencing repair, instituted some benches and some other minor amenities, but we're in conversation, or at least beginning conversations, with the Town of Rhinebeck, which owns this property and a field adjoining that with the hopes that we can work out some type of an arrangement where we can use that barely utilized sports field and expand the dog park and make a world-class dog park. Because while there are many families in our combined communities, there are more households with pets than there are with children. And so, as we talk about bringing community together, the dog park has its own community and folks who like to use it. But it's lacking some basic elements and it needs some expansion and, you know, some elements, some water, some shelter, all of those things in order to really bring it up to stuff. So, those conversations can continue and hopefully, we'll have some good news and be talking about things in 2024. Community resiliency, obviously, Mother Nature keeps throwing us curveballs. For years, we've had lots of studies and flood risk analyses. We've replaced one bridge, we're in the middle of replacing or designing the second one. Land preservation is so important when you talk about minimizing impacts. And so, we continue to protect lands and we have just about completed our LWRP. Isn't that true, Christine King?
It is awaiting review with the state.
With the state, okay. Clean energy infrastructure. So, we want to talk about this just very briefly because it's how we're spending your money and how we are saving you money. And I'll get into some of the specific numbers, but we talked about the community solar farm. We're now up to 12 charging portals. You had the two in the village parking lot that we assisted with. We continue with community choice aggregation programs, more options for folks to participate in clean energy and to save money. And there is our first installation back in 2019 on the Village Well Field. So, New York State Town Law says, when a cemetery association abandons it, the town must take it over. And what a wonderful job John Kuhn and his staff have done on the Red Church Cemetery, this beautiful structure, which has been featured in movies over the last few years, by the way. And we are making investments, not only in that portion of Tivoli, but we have worked with the village on facilitating the transfer over to the municipality, to the village of a parking lot at St. Sylvia's that is now an additional municipal lot. Open space, we talked about permanently protecting more farmland, that's the Stickle Farm next to the Red Church Cemetery and some mountains maybe were recognized. Communications, we are updating once again our website to provide greater ADA accessibility. But we're very proud of the fact that we are able to bring government to you through the features on our website. So, if you sign up for notifications, we can send you not only notices, but all of the backup documents that go along with it. Tonight's meeting, for example, you'll get every single page sent to you by email or by text, maybe more than you want to know, but better you have it and take a look at it. So, very excited about the updates on the website. Obviously, one of the basic functions of local government is safety-related. We've increased policing over the years by 95% and continue to fund important fire company equipment as well as expansion of the firehouse, which. The Tivoli Firehouse, thank you very much. And hopefully, they'll be getting going on construction in 2024, early 2024. You've heard mention road safety issues, truck speed limits. We've applied for a speed limit reductions and had varying degrees of success and continue to lolly almany so that we can control our own speed limits on our own roads. Increased funding for VFW programs. So, we talk about town taxes and here are some of the other programs. If you joined, just to give you some idea of what you might have saved, just some of them are for minor in nature and some of them are more significant. I think this is, this community solar figure is a little dated, but suffice it to say, if you joined that first community solar program, you're paying somewhere around half of what the going rate is now for electric. And so, our plan is, you've heard it articulated, is to find five or six appropriately cited locations where every resident in our community would at least have the option of joining a community solar farm because now we can build these and take advantage of features of the Inflation Reduction Act and immediately get the incentives to reduce the cost of the development of solar. And you know that there is a small mined area, previously mined area on Cooking Ham West that we are going to study to see if it's suitable for solar. So, over the years, how has the tax rate changed? Well, in 2016, the mill rate, as it's known, was 2.34. Right now, as proposed in this budget, it's 1.58. So, you can see that the reduction is significant as it relates to taxes on an individual's house. Here are all the projects over the course of the years. I think there's something like 75 capital projects. You're welcome to Hulu's. I'm not going to read them all. I read many of them already in the slides, but just so folks know what they're getting for their money. My budget message, I think I would like to highlight a couple of things. Obviously, offsetting the tax rate, just, you know, none of us have a crystal ball, but what we are seeing, I think, in last year's message, I said to keep a heads up on mortgage revenues and that they might actually disappoint a little bit. And now, looking in, we just have one more month. And now looking in, we just have one more month. The mortgage year, as we receive those revenues, is different than the calendar year. With one more month left, it does look like it will be slightly shy projections, but nothing significant. Hopefully, we'll see in 2024, for many reasons, the lowering of rates to help offset what might be lower mortgage rates again for the next six to 12 months. That said, we do have healthy reserve accounts. So the interest that we are generating on those reserve accounts are higher than expectation as well. For the folks at home, 2023 represented several challenges with potential lower development scenarios at the Red Hook Village Gateway and Berrytown. Those risks could have altered the character of the community and the fiscal health of our service-related budget. I'm pleased we were able to play an integral role in those outcomes. And obviously, we don't do this alone. We really piggyback on the energy and the passion of our volunteers and our employees here at the town. And so we want to thank everyone for their hard work. These results are really a reflection of that. And so tax rate, so here's, sometimes people like visuals better. So Danielle, yes, if you'd be kind enough to hand to the pie chart. Everybody's looking for pies, but here's a pie chart instead. And so for your taxes, folks at home, you want to know where your tax money is going, what the split is. And obviously, you can see that some play a minor role in your overall tax burden. Some play a major role. Fire, library. The town is 7% now, if you look at all the tax rates. And county is 12 cents on the dollar. And the school is now 78 cents on the dollar, just to give you some idea. While I'm mentioning fire, I do want to mention to the folks at home, if I didn't already, that if you live in the village, you'll have an opportunity to vote on October 24th. If you are a village resident only, change either village and both villages.
Okay.
You will have an opportunity to vote on the LoSAP increase. What's a LoSAP? It's a stipend that volunteer firefighters and emergency responders receive to help offset the costs that they incur. And that is proposed to grow from $500 to $1,200 a year. It's not for everyone who's a volunteer in those companies. It's for those who meet certain metrics. And that is done by public referendum. So again, I would direct you to the pie chart. That very important service is now 1% of your tax bill. It won't really be increasing if you vote in favor of this because the amount is fairly insignificant. But just a very important way to say thank you to our volunteer firefighters. And again, to adjust for a figure that hasn't changed now for 16 years.
I think some more to say, we did do an analysis of what the potential impact could be. And because, as you mentioned, it's not, everybody doesn't get it across the board. There's not that many people that qualify at this point.
Oh, you're talking about the property tax rebate? We're talking about the LoSAP now, which is a part of our fire contract.
I know, but we checked the LoSAP also.
The LoSAP, yeah. So it's not a significant, yeah, it's not a significant impact, yeah. But important to them. And certainly more important, I think, for the community to come out and to say thank you to folks who answer, in some cases, I think Red Hook Fire does about 800 calls a year.
Amazing number.
Tivoli, maybe four, five, 600 a year.
I want to mention that the estimates that are in the notice are based on the full roster. Right.
Exactly. You plan for, plan for the most in budget? And I was going to include those numbers in the 2024. But the way it works is they, it's effective January 1st. So at the end of Gen, of 2024, we'll know what that new number is. We pay then in the beginning of 2025. So you'll see that in next year's proposed budget. And here, here is the budget itself with the various salaries of the elected officials and the various funds. When we talk about tax rates, by the way, I'm referring to the A, B, and DB funds. Those are the major general funds, not the special benefit assessment districts such as water, lighting. Those are not townwide districts, they're village-wide districts. Here's the full tentative budget. It's scrolling, going too fast for you. Welcome to read at your leisure. This chart can sometimes be a little bit deceiving. So I think it's important to just let folks at home know. I think this is sort of the operative number here. If you don't receive any other type of exemption besides a star and your house is valued at the county median, which is $395,000. You are paying $552 in town taxes. And that's for everything for taking care of the roads, the parks, the trails, all the bills, all the administration. That's the figure there that you want to focus on. And as far as what's being proposed, whether or not it's within the tax cap, obviously it is because it's proposed to be a decrease in the tax rate and not an increase in the taxes. One of the things I think I mentioned is we're not pulling from reserves to do this. You will oftentimes see municipalities do that. We have not done that in years and that's not a part of this budget. The debt we have is well below what we are allowed to have. Our debt limit is $83.5 million. The debt we have is $4.1 million. So we only have 4.9% of our debt limit. That is the budget, folks, the tentative budget. So I would ask the town clerk, she would be kind enough to formally deliver it to you tonight so that we may go ahead and schedule a budget hearing. And I think we have those in binders for the town board members in the conference room.
Do you want me to bring them up here?
No, that's not necessary. We'll just do it tonight, though. So may we schedule our budget workshop? I know we've been trying to bounce around some dates. Can you all tell me how October 18th? I know it's quite a ways in the distance. October 18th, how that looks? Anybody, any conflicts there? Jacob, you're okay? Billy, you're okay? Christine?
I checked earlier.
We're good?
It was a good one.
So October 18th, Indiana Network for you as well, if I remember. It works for Ann, our bookkeeper. October 18th. So our timeline, it's a work backdrop. So you have to pass the budget by the Thursday after Election Day. And then you have to have the appropriate amount of days for a public hearing notice. So, you know, come prepared for a long night on October 18th, just in case we have a lot of discussion over and want to make some changes. But I hope that you're okay with the main elements, structure of the budget itself.
7:30?
Uh, 7:30? What do you all think? Or sorry, 7:30, does it work? Prepare to stay three hours if we start at 7:30?
For the normal.
Okay, all right, 7:30. Thank you all very much. So why don't we have a motion to set the budget workshop for October 18th at 7:30 PM? And I say move, is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we have been bouncing around. For the folks at home, apologies. Before we get to committee, department, and board reports, I had referenced earlier that the application period is open now for potential C D B G projects. And just as a reminder of the way the program works, you either have to have a project within a low mod area. Low to moderate income is what that stands for. And as it turns out, there are two areas within our township that fall within low mod. One is the southeast portion here and the other one is the village of Tivoli. And so if you want to do a project in that area, you would be eligible. Otherwise, if you're doing a project elsewhere in the township that is assumed to be for a population automatically that qualifies as low mod. So for example, if you do a project for seniors, it is assumed that seniors fall into the category as a whole, as a basket, that is low mod. So a couple of things that I would ask you to consider. First off is what about the idea, since we have sidewalks now all the way down nine, you can almost make it to Hannaford, our, our community grocery store, but not quite because of that giant rock that's on the corner there, of which I don't know what it would take to work around. But that said, there is already an unofficial path that people are using to go around the back of St. Margaret's. So let's take a look here. There is a pathway. If you take the sidewalk here and you go to the corner, you see this is where we have one of our art boxes now and some trees. And what about a potential sidewalk area here along the property boundary that would access and work with Hannaford Drive or the back of Hannaford Drive, which, by the way, you file. And that would get folks to the grocery store safely. That is something we could do and it falls within that low mod. So that's one of the options.
Do you know what the elevation change is between, for section two? Like, it's got to be a little uphill there, right?
I, that's a little, but that's a very good question. I don't know what the answer, Jacob, but I can try to find that out for you. Look at a slope map.
I mean, even if we went, tried to deal with the rock, there'd still be an elevation.
Yeah, there's still the elevation coming from where the sidewalk, sidewalk party is. But just curious.
But if we did that, well, I mean, we own the St. Margaret's parcel, which is in the front.
We would have to work with Hannaford.
We'd have to work with Hannaford in case we wanted to.
Provide a public walkway to their services.
Well, or because of the slope.
Jacob's having a hard time imagining them not wanting this.
Right, well, I mean, because if it has to be zigzagged or something because of the slope, it's going to be inclined.
Well, here's the road. Oh, you're talking about this portion here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, is, is this particular route more or less linear feet than if it went down, just down Route 9?
Be less.
It made the left.
Oh, less, because you have to go well past.
They have to go well, oh, that's right, okay.
And then up. And somehow you have to climb a mountain, a literal mountain at the corner there. Um, yeah, so this would be, and I can't think of anything. I mean, you know, again, we talk about equity and accessibility and the importance of it. And then we have a grocery store that frankly, you can't really flock to. And so that really impacts, you know, people with limited resources, a household with one car or no car, you know, their accessibility or something like that. So I, I see this as, you know, potentially an important measure to take for our community. Certainly, as tradition develops out across the road and the T N D fully develops over time, I think it's going to be important to have a non-motorized option to get to the grocery store.
Well, also, is the long-term plan of the infill essentially to create, have the village kind of move all the way down to Robebey? You want to have walkability to all the, the resources, especially the one supermarket in town.
Exactly. So.
I think it's definitely worth exploring.
Okay, so something to run by the county. We have to do that this week. Now, I'm thinking the timeline, so.
Do you need to call a public hearing today so that you can have a hearing in October?
I think we better call a public hearing today because the application is due on the 20th. Our next meeting is the 10th. That's a little tight with the deadlines and the publishing requirements. Why don't we go ahead and call a public hearing for October 10th, 7:55?
And you would be indicating that you're considering submission of a 2024 community development block grant application or you're going to project our projects? Because when you're doing a public hearing on C D B G, you're not necessarily specifying a project. You're asking the public to comment on what projects you should consider.
Exactly right. We're soliciting their input. We will share with them some ideas we have. But really, the purpose of the public hearing is to make sure that we get the community's input. And we very much want to hear that.
Right, we'll have enough time to investigate if something comes up.
All right. So the good news is.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion, sorry. Public hearing, 7:55, October 10th. The language as articulated by our attorney to the town. Thank you very much, Chris. I say move, was there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. All right, so that was the good news. Does that be a wonderful way to connect the, to the grocery store? Have a sidewalk, again, we're preparing St. Margaret's for more community use. Now, here's the benefits. So we can apply for up to $200,000. Again, just a rough estimate. When you ask the engineer, what are we thinking about? What are we talking about? We'll never know until we go out to bed and get estimates. We may be looking at more like 400. So this may be a 50/50 match.
Is that with a donation on the right of way from Hannaford?
I'm assuming with the donation of the right of way from Hannaford, yes.
Does that, does C D, you forget, do C D B G grants need magic funds? Or get extra points for?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't recall that they do. I think we're, you know, I hope I got that right. You would think after all these years, it would be on the top of my head. But we do a lot of grant applications. I don't, I don't think so. We often do do some matching because we want to show the agencies that we are committed to the project and we're willing to use our money.
So we have to open discussion to Hannaford right of way?
Yes, we need to gauge interest.
It might take a while, right, to get an approval for corporate.
And our engineer has an ongoing working relationship with the folks at Hannaford, yeah. So the other option that was discussed, I'm not sure whether or not would qualify, but I think Time Bond's going to run it by the county, is whether or not restrooms over at Park West could be financed in part by C D B G. So we can also get more information on that and see, see how that unfolds.
Probably going to like this one better because it's right in that area.
I think so because it's in low mod, right? Sure, sure.
And the grocery stores.
And the grocery store, right.
I mean, let's ask about two, but I think they're going to go for this one.
Right. Okay. Very good.
If they go for your one.
If they go for your one, exactly. All right, well, I've jumped around so much that now I. All right, well, I've jumped around so much that I would have to scroll to get to where we need to be. I apologize. Let's do, uh, board, committee, departmental reports first up.
Did you have water stuff?
No water stuff because we're continuing that to the next meeting, the public hearing. So there'll be no action on water.
That's true.
Because you don't have to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Who would like to do building and zoning?
Since I'm the liaison to the building department, I'll start.
Bill?
Unless somebody else is willing to do it.
Well, yeah, let's, let's spread the, let's spread the love. Let's, why don't you do it, Bill?
Since I actually read it.
Well, I, and I also didn't hear a lot of jumping in there like, no, I want to.
So despite how thick these reports are and double-sided, really it's this first page and one other page that was important. So for the month of September, it's just about over. The building department issued forty-four, there were forty-four permits. They conducted fifty dollar inspections. They issued fifteen certificates of occupancy or completion. They received three complaints and there was ten thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars in revenue as a result of various permitting activities. The only other page is near the end, there's a pie chart which helps explain, explains the, the source of the, the activities and the monies that are, that are charged. And then, yeah, there we go, thank you. So various different activities, fire safety inspections, driveway permit fees. And so that and the building permits obviously are usually the biggest piece of this. It was, yeah, sixty-seven hundred dollars plus. So that, that helps a reader understand the report. And there's a page before that also that talks about various, it's more of a table version of that. The rest of the report is, you know, is a property by property, description of identification, description of the activity that was conducted.
Okay, Bill? You're welcome. Who would like to do highway, Jacob?
Eleven. So there's a letter from Teresa. It's focused on budget requests for twenty twenty-four. She requests three things in order of priority. They are titled mechanic to replace a future retiree, increase funds for D E V, point oh six, point five one, one four, one two, for road improvements, the purchase of equipment, a compact excavator, crew cab chuck for use with the chipper. And again, she said the request for a mechanic expressed hands over the requests. And she provides some materials with explanations for each of those requests. Those are included alongside her letter.
Very good.
I just also asked him for an increase.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good point. It's on the.
It's on the cover sheet.
Yeah, it's on the cover sheet, but there.
That's a, yeah, part of her project request.
Yeah, Jacob.
Yes.
As the liaison to the highway department, you know, I read this letter. You know, the person who's retiring and has been performing mechanic services says retiring in twenty twenty-four. You know, I think this town board would be very helpful to know whether that's January, June, or December in terms of lead time for us to actually have a conver, a meaningful conversation, discussion about your request.
What do they, what do they say on the bad TV shows? Asked and answered. I asked that question this morning. And the answer I got was, I think it's the end of the year in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, well, that's helpful to know.
John, John Gardner happened to be in town hall and I said, by the way, do you happen to know? But, you know, individuals' plans change.
Of course.
You know, it gives us good lead time and we really appreciate knowing that well in advance. So thank you to Steve. Maybe we'll talk him out of it, okay? That'll be your job.
Yeah.
Apparently he's so handy with this stuff that we're, we're just gonna have to, you know, well, well, we're gonna have two dump shops within, you know, a few steps. I mean, where, where are you gonna find that near your appointment, right? Okay. Holy s.
Okay, I get this one too.
You do. And, and I was playing U T Ts.
Okay, that's a uniform traffic ticket. So for the period of August, there were eighty-two incidents that, or calls that the P D went on. That's not including Tivoli, who now contracts with the village of Red Hook's police department. And they also had nineteen. They issued twenty-nine tickets. Uh, they were active in the month. There's a lot of traffic coming through in the summertime and most of those are speeding tickets. Uh, there were no parking tickets and there was one arrest made. And I will repeat what I say just about every month. If you go to the last page, welfare checks is always the largest item on there. And I think that people, I, I just, I'll reiterate it every month that people understand that when people are concerned about people's welfare, they haven't come to work, they're not returning calls, you know, sick parents, whatever. You know, generally the police department is the one that's the first responder and they go and show up. They've actually saved some people's lives, you know, looking through a window and seeing an unconscious person on the floor. And so, you know, it's, it's an important piece of local policing. And obviously from the length of the number of incidents, there's twelve instances this past month. People, you know, they, they reported the calls and I, I think it's a very important public service that's often under, under-reported and under-appreciated. So that's that.
Thank you very much. Christine, in the good old days, we used to ask you to abbreviate the rec commission report.
It's shorter now. It's much shorter than usual.
Um, but we're gonna exercise the three-minute rule like we do with public comments on the law.
Well, you know, I just want to start off by saying that the reason that you keep saying that to me is because it is amazing the amount of work that our rec department gets done and that they are responsible for. And so let's just repeat that there are Rec Park East and West, Saint Margaret's, the dog park, the, the Saint, um, Red, Red Church and the, and the cemetery. And I think I'm forgetting something else because I think there's six things, but.
Don't, you got that.
I got that one. But it's really important to recognize the amount of work that they do. And also the rec committee is full of really devoted volunteers who also give a lot of time. So as everybody at home knows, this year with all the rain and everything, it was a heavy mowing year. So a lot of time spent on, it's a lot of grounds to mow and keep up with. And the fields, the turf field as well as the other fields, sports fields that we have are getting a tremendous amount of use. Uh, we have a great volunteer who handles all the scheduling for that. And as we mentioned, we are getting more and more requests for use of the, particularly the turf field, the all-ability field. And even from outside the community and the rec committee has set guidelines for that. And so that's, if, you know, if it's just another community that wants to use our park, that doesn't qualify. So still, and on top of that, there's regular maintenance that has to happen. As we talked about earlier, the dugouts, the roofs on the dugouts were replaced. We have to do the roof on the pavilion playground shed. There has been tree work done in the north parking lot in preparation for the new connector over to Rec Park West. That was done. Excuse me. There is, unfortunately, we did have some serious vandalism of the men's restroom. You saw in the presentation earlier, the pictures of the really nicely redone bathrooms. And so unfortunately, we had almost twenty-five hundred dollars worth of damage to the partition's doors and mirror in the men's room. Uh, and it was, as it said in here, the repairs were done and unfortunately has, has lost some of its freshness. You can tell that things have been repaired and the paint has been fixed, et cetera. So that is just a shame that we have, you know, had a beautiful facility that was vandalized. So the rec director is working with the village of Red Hook Police to review the security camera footage and do further investigation into that.
And just to clarify, we have cameras around the buildings, but we don't have cameras in the restaurant.
Not, not within, right, not within the restaurant.
Which is a, that's a challenge.
Right, exactly, yeah. Um, and then we also talked about the redo of the, the basketball court. So I just wanted to mention, for instance, that we have a league that plays there and ended at the end of August. And a hundred and fifty-seven players are in that league. So this is the amount of usage that our facilities are getting. Um, and we did get our, our request for fifteen thousand dollars for our summer programs was approved.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
So just lots and lots more to talk about. We should have a lot of it in the grants, I mean, the budget slides, so good, good stuff going on there.
Very good. We want to thank Jacob. John was integral in helping for folks at home. If you were following along this summer, we had a first of its kind in New York State as part of our Electrify Red Hook Initiative. Demonstration projects, moving electric landscaping equipment. And nearly sixty households participated in residential neighborhoods and got to try out mowers and leaf blowers as a way to become more familiar and comfortable with these cleaner, um, reliable options.
And now those are now part of the rec committees.
Exactly right. So the grant not only funded the equipment for the demo, but we get to keep it and use it on our facilities. Just one more example of how we're, you know, tapping into grant opportunities to help defer costs. Do we have more committee or department reports tonight? We've got, we've got water. Do we have any water left, Bill?
I think so.
Okay. That's good.
The water department has a meeting once a month to talk with the contractor who runs the water facility for us. And this is a standard template form of report that they issue. Only a couple of things to point out, that the pump volumes on well one and two are a hundred and a hundred and two gallons per minute. They actually can pump about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and fifty-five gallons per minute if necessary. Fortunately, you don't need to. And there've been a lot of activities that the water department's taken. Two reduced amount of water that's pumped to, you know, to preserve our water. The chlor, no chloroform in our water, which is tested regularly, this water is very clean. And then these are the other kinds of required tests that are required by the state, the state law. And we always, we always come out with the flying colors and the water is excellent. And then these are things that have been discussed here before, the storage tank and a few other things that need to be done. And so that's that.
Very good. Thank you very much. And thank you to Katie for assisting getting out the quarterly bills during. Who was, okay, was involved in a car accident. Appreciate, once again, the staff chipping in and helping each other out here at town hall. Okay, uh, tree preservation, so we need to talk about the trees.
Can I do it?
Very, very good news from our, our report, but I want to talk about trees in Canada. Come on, you're finished with this.
All right. So a few bullet points from the tree preservation commission. Fall tree planting is going to be on Bud's Corner Road in Upper Red Hook, the newly relied property. Committee's ordered eleven trees from Chicklows Nursery. The delivery location has been changed to the highway department building, which should be a good spot for that. So thank you to Teresa for working with the committee for that. Options for tree inventory programs are discussed. There are a few different options. We materials for iTree might be promising, but I think there's going to be some more research going into that. And then the committee will be purchasing a basic membership to the American Chestnut Foundation, which allows for the ordering of, you know, more resilient chestnut trees. It's a very small membership fee, you know, can get you in for high-quality trees. So a lot of good work happening there, a lot of, you know, excitement and good meetings.
Another, another real good one.
Yeah.
And we very much appreciate all their, all their work. Trees in Canada, should we not talk about that? It's very depressing.
It's very depressing. So we should just finish the meeting. We could talk about that later.
More trees in Canada have burned down as far as landmass than the state of Florida this year. More, larger, uh, larger area than a hundred and four countries. I don't know, a hundred and ninety or something.
Domino effect on wood, wood availability in a couple of years.
And, yeah. Which was supposed to absorb all this carbon with all these trees is now emitting way more carbon right now than they are absorbing because of all these fires. It's really, it's very depressing and there's interesting articles about the way they planted. They planted the wrong trees too close. They, they, they made it easier on themselves, six feet apart. Black spruce, I don't know if you read them in the, in the Times, and just like charcoal. Just, just went up in flames. Anyway, okay, that's my depressing add-on to that report. But let's talk about the dogs since I've gone to the dogs.
This is actually.
This is old, though.
Well, they, they sent us July and August. July's came in the day after our, our meeting in July.
Okay.
And that's, um.
Okay. Is the dog injured or report?
Yeah, so, um.
Dog months?
It's, it's actually been a quiet two months, which is, which is good. In July and in August, there was one dog at large, which is generally a dog that's running. But they're not dangerous dogs, they're not biting anybody. They're just, you know, maybe they, they got off the tether or got out of their fenced yard. And then there's generally one wildlife. And I, I did call to ask once about what kind of wildlife are we talking about? And I was assuming that it was going to be something, you know, like raccoons in the garbage. Chipmunks are, are one of the things, opossums, you know, the things that we have here in the country.
Did they get a call for the moose recently?
I have not heard of any sightings in.
So, oh.
I've had a meeting at there.
Well, you have not been following social media, Bill. We're very disappointed in you. The moose started out in Hyde Park, was sighted in Hyde Park. Worked his way up to Chancellor in Rhinebeck and then up through Red Hook and then into Livingston in a matter of days. It almost seemed to be one township per day.
Was it an adult moose?
Um, as, as, as far as we could tell, it wasn't an adult moose, yeah.
Those are big animals.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's unusual. Well, well, it wasn't reported to the, the Duchess County S C A.
Well, it's in September, so it'll be in September.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
Bill, I see that the year for a dog bite is not, they should be six.
Okay, so April.
So the, the year names.
Well, all the way around the end, you're going.
It's missing.
Yeah, from New Year's, they're not first, it's fixed.
So it means the bottom total is also.
Twenty-eight.
Likes, you got five, six, and it's, oh.
And it's also zero, so.
Yeah, it's a mistake.
Yeah, and, and the number on the bottom is also off because of that.
All right, I'll, I'll point that, thank you.
It's a small thing, we can still see the suggestion, but I just wanted to know, yeah.
And actually, the number will be much smaller because it's actually, there was only one dog bite in April. There were five different people that reported it and the way that they maintain their records, they can't, I'll do this.
Interesting.
Well, that's confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a little, I was concerned when I saw that.
Sure, sure, yeah, I mean, that's confusing if that's their reporting protocol. Have they thought about changing that?
I would hope so.
Okay.
That's probably some expensive new system that needs to be purchased.
That's worked out so well for so many entities in the area, you know, somewhere. Folks, it's nine o'clock. Um, I'm gonna wish you a happy holiday if that applied. I hope you had nice holidays. Thank everyone, Red Hook Village, the Village Events Committee for all their hard work towards hardscrabble. Um, I would like to however, scold Mother Nature because once again, she made hardscrabble drizzly and miserable. It still was a wonderful community event, but she owes us. Next time, let's hopefully it's a sunny one. We will see you on October tenth for our next regularly scheduled meeting. Please stay healthy and thanks for joining us. Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into attorney-client. So, I'll second. Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hall. Myself, aye. And thank you Danielle and Panda. Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.